Either to the needed or eighteen inches inside of the house, whichever comes first. We're gonna look at designing our project with the thought of having to replace those portions all the way into the house because the pipe that we're replacing, a lot of it was put in the same time as the pipe on Jackson Street. I'd rather plan for the worst and get better than that than go the other way. One of the problems with that scenario though, according to USDA, they will not fund the portion from the shut-off. They'll fund the portion from the main to the shut-off, but from the shut-off into the house, although that's on private property, they will not fund that portion. So we'll have to find our own funding to handle that part of it. So that's, that's in a nutshell what the water main on Monroe Street is. The sanitary sewer, that was kind of interesting too. That was mostly installed originally in nineteen thirty-four, from what I can find. When you look at the videos of what they videotaped out there, it's in pretty sad shape. There's a lot of cracks and broken pieces and missing pieces. It's a rectified clay pipe and I believe it was more likely installed at the time when you had combination sewers, water, stormwater and sanitary went into that, come down the street and of course up to the river and away it went. Then nineteen seventy-two-ish, nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three, big project to install storm sewer and take and separate those. And then at the end of Monroe, they did some work between the storm discharge and sanitary sewer to run sewer across the river and over to the treatment facility and again separating those two flows. And that was in nineteen seventy-two and seventy-three. Again, through the SAW grant that the city received, the asset management plan came together for Monroe Street and there's some areas found that need to be taken care of, the poor condition of the pipe, the Kent Street with groundwater coming into the sewer system. Want to get all that out of there before we resurface the street and replace it with plastic. That's their sewer. The section that runs under their highway here, last year, we really don't want to tear up the highway, that's for whatever reason, looks pretty good on the video except for cracks in it and some joint dis- separations that the engineers who put that report together felt that lining the inside of the pipe would take care of those issues and that'd be a direction we want to look into. That would be a lot less expensive way to fix that pipe than taking it up and replacing it under the highway portion here.
Dan, what is that, if you were to line it, what's the like expectancy of just lining another twenty, thirty years?
I think it has probably forty to fifty years to it because it basically, it takes the inside of the pipe and makes it new again. And then it, lining of the pipe is basically, it's like a felt sock and they put a bunch of resins into it, stick it down in the pipe, fill it with hot water to expand it out and it sets up. Drain it out, go back to whatever holes that need to be cut into the leads that come in, which in this section, there's very few. And it solidifies and if you do it right, use the right size liner, it becomes a nice smooth interior. If you use the wrong size liner, ends up being a problem, gotta replace the pipe. So we'll make sure, best of our abilities, use the right size. But it's a, it is a process that you see used a lot nowadays because it does save on the excavation portion. Drawback is you gotta do something with the flow going through there while you're doing this work, you gotta bypass pump it, which is, can be difficult at times. Again, the street work, we all know Monroe Street's in pretty poor shape. If you look at the, added the PESA rating for the street from the paperwork here and with the exception of the section here by Cigal was done in twenty sixteen, the rest of it's all rated about a two on the, on the PESA rating. If you wanna, there's a lot of numbers I know on that, on the chart here, but the numbers that you wanna look at is where it says last rating, the next to last column. And for Monroe Street, again, they're all twos except for the section from Avery to one-one. This was done, this was done, it says twenty twenty. But the, the street construction, basically, the whole street will be reconstructed since we're doing all the excavation underground, a lot of that cost of the street will fall back into utilities, but there are sections where it will not and that's where the state funds of three seventy-five will help pay for the portion that we have to pay for as far as the street bills, USDA will cover. The drive approaches would only be addressed if we have to tear them out because of services, water services under them. There's a few that have that and with the exception of the library, the rest would be left alone. You recall the library driveway out of Monroe, it's kinda steep. We're gonna get that fixed while we're going by.
Party, was low my party about putting utilities underground at the same time?
I don't know over here. I know it's something that they're constantly looking at, they'll do it, you know, when they can, like when we did five arcans, you know, that all got put underground.
I was just thinking reconstruction and.
Yeah.
We would approach them to see if they were interested in doing it and we do the design work.
We also will be approaching, contacting all the other utilities that are underground, gas and if there's cable or whatever. Make sure they're aware of this. I let, in fact, I let the gas company know just for even meeting here tonight of our projects for the next three years, this being one of them. So they have two years to get in here and do something, which probably, my experience with them, will take them all two years to get, to get the state in here. Although, I'll give a little credit out on the streets we paved this year, they did get their, take care of their problems out there before we resurface. So we will work with the other utilities and that's our big sense so that they don't have to come back and tear up our streets too. We'll also, so again, since we're using money from the state, which is basically federal dollars for the three seventy-five, we'll be required to do the NDOT process and follow the NDOT procedure, especially when it comes to the ramping for the sidewalks, make them all ADA compliant to whatever the most current standard is. And that's the, in a nutshell, what we're gonna be doing on Monroe Street.
So Dan, your overall budget is one point nine for the sewer than two point four for the street? So that's about a four, almost a million dollar project?
On this portion, we're talking the.
Cause I see you have one point eight eight for water sewer storms and then there was a two point something million.
Two point three seven.
Right, so it's a little.
Almost two point four million. That's total.
Total.
Monroe and the side.
One of the other things that we're looking at doing in this project is, we believe we'll have about six hundred, six hundred thousand approximately in local major street funds in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So the plan would be also, if we can, is to try and get the streets between, all the cross streets between Monroe and Washington. And if we can even, the way we can swing it out to Lafayette, we will, it's just a matter of how much dollars.
Or Jefferson as well.
Right.
That's, yeah. With the Washington street construction in twenty twenty-three is where we'd wanna consider many of those. If we're gonna do something to Lafayette, we catch it when we do the Monroe Street, but the rest of them, we wait and do when we do Washington Street. So then we're pulling everything down, everything in this area is due as we can, to the best of our abilities, we pull the funding along.
And the main reason we're doing Monroe before Washington is because of the water and sewer?
We're doing it mainly because we have three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the state that they will give us use in twenty twenty-two.
That infiltration problem helps capacity a lot there too, right?
That's one of the.
That's one of those two big ones?
Yes, that's one of the two big ones. We're gonna fix the other one this summer when we do, this coming summer when we do Foreman Street and then we'll catch the second one when we do Monroe Street.
I'm, I'm pleased I live on Monroe, but yesterday I walked down Washington and sitting here looking at, yeah, we're gonna do that in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, to give you a little background, when I came, I was told twenty twenty-one's when we wanted to do Washington, because how bad it is, but because of all the background work that needs to be done, I mean, the USDA guy says, well, maybe do both of them in the same year. Ooh, there's a lot of background work that needs to be done to get us to the point of construction that we wanna make sure we do and do it right and not rush it just because of whatever.
You have two major streets under construction directly next to each other at the same time.
Yeah, we put everybody on the back. I didn't go over all when both bridges were closed at the same time, and that was only a short period, so I can't imagine.
Six months.
Any questions on Monroe Street? Is it the Washington Street, we're doing them both at the same time because USDA, we're trying to get through their process and their process is they need to get paperwork that describes the water, the sewer for each street. If we can get them both at the same time, then we can get our hands on their, on their funding to do our, our projects. And that's why we do them both at the same time to save money on that design, the preliminary design portion of it and the application portion. But under the Washington Street, which is basically the, similar to Monroe Street, we're looking at total reconstruction from the south, turn this up front street and then include going to the north end at Fremont for, for resurfacing and then be installing the way you did the water main from front to main and then again from main to Grant. Just to replace the four-inch lines that are located through there. Well, Washington Street from main to Avery is resurfaced and underdrains installed in twenty fifteen. The water main in this section is four-inch diameter pipe that was installed over fifty years ago and we're considering that for replacement as well. Sanitary sewer proposed to be replaced from Avery to Grant. And the storm sewer along the entire portion of Washington will be repaired and replaced as needed. For Avery to Grant, there's a lot of issues with the sewer through there. Be aware, there's two sanitary lines that run through this big section of that, paralleling each other. Can't tell you why that happened, but it does. And then we wanna get those together. There's also a smaller ionized problem over in that area that was found through the Grant. We're not sure if it came from the school or where it came from, I think some way it came from our DPW building that we're gonna take care of, but all that is being brought together as well to be resolved. We need to further review the infrastructure on Washington, the connecting streets during the design process that may potentially add to, to this project. At this time, the section, the work I just mentioned is about one point five million dollars to do that. Items that we're looking at adding to the project, replacement of asphalt on the connecting streets between Monroe, Washington and Jefferson, as Mike has mentioned, replacement of the sanitary sewer main stubs on Sherman, Grant, Kent. There's short stubs on those streets that I have not investigated for what condition they are. If we wanna resurface those streets, we wanna look at what those utilities are. They seem to only, only service one or two houses. We wanna make sure what condition those are as we move forward. Installation of eight-inch water main on Kent Street from Washington Jefferson to help again with fire flows in the south end of town. Front street for whatever reason has six inch and then Jefferson has six inches, but between those two streets, it's four. And we wanna make sure that's increased so that we get the proper flows through there as well. We're doing Kent Street, the first one, we need to put the next. One drop back, when we do Monroe Street, we do the side roads with water main, we would not connect those new mains to the existing four-inch on Washington Street at that time. The next year, when we do Washington Street, we'll pull them all together. A short time, it's just a stub there, shouldn't degrade the water quality that much to affect the homeownership or anything. Then we need to look at some, some more sewer work. This is, the sewer pipe on south of Avery could be very old, up to eighty-five years old, according to what I can find on the, on the GIS as well and such that we have. So those things still, we still need to look at that when we go through the design process. Again, we're looking at securing the same types of dollars to perform the work. We're trying to look at doing the preliminary design and possibly the other design work in conjunction with Monroe to save dollars on having surveyors out and things of that nature and having groups work on that end of it. Project design will be completed in twenty twenty-two and construction scheduled for twenty twenty-three. Again, since this is a local street, no NDOT funding is available for that, so we can use our own and we can follow our own rules on that. We don't have to go through the NDOT bidding process. Again, we're still looking at USDA to help with that funding. With that, twenty twenty-three construction date, again, early in spring as possible and hopefully open the traffic by the end of the construction season with restoration in twenty-four. The water main again falls into the same category of four-inch cast iron diameter, mostly entire section north of Main Street was installed between seventy and seventy-three. Again, that's the area concerned with having like new snacks off the four-inch for galvanized service lines. Portion from main to front was installed in nineteen fifty and all the four-inch will be replaced with eight-inch. And there's a short section of six-inch from Grant to Fremont that's not on the replacement schedule at this, of the project at this time. Again, we talked about water flow reliability, showing the flows of less than a thousand gallons per minute. We're trying to address those with the larger piping and connections. Additional research is needed into the water system as we move forward. There's no water mains between Monroe and Washington Street on Sherman, Grant, King and High and Avery and we need to look at, see if, through the, when we're doing the design, if there is a benefit by putting one of those, putting connections in there to help loop the system if it, if it helps further our system as we move along. So those will be investigated as we move along. We have a sewer service issue with situation there. Sanitary sewer, again, by indications there are nineteen thirty-four installations and sometime in the fifties, a second line was put in paralleling it. Most of the older section of pipes are large pipes, twelve, twenty-seven inch diameter pipes. Twelve inch is basically as large as you go for most residential areas, the larger pipe is made indication that it was also conveying stormwater at the time. And again, seventy-two, seventy-three, there was a project install storm up on Washington Street and along with a few sanitary stubs, again, on the side streets that we need to look into. We also need to look at the piping south of Avery Street because it's large pipe, twenty-four to twenty-seven inch diameter, it was installed in nineteen thirty-four. Pipe comes down and gets to Kent Street, I'm sorry, Front Street and then goes behind the buildings heading towards the west and that from Monroe ties in. So we wanna make sure all our, our system down there is as good condition as we can get it through. Oh, we had the floods, we end up with water getting into our system down in that area. Floods out the water treatment facility. If we can rectify any of that, we wanna try to get that done as well. Those all have to be reviewed and, and cost estimates put together through that so we can know how much of that's gonna, it's gonna cost the city. Again, the street portion, still following it the same as on Monroe, we're gonna replace the entire street surface gravel on up, mostly because we're gonna be replacing utilities underground anyways and that's gonna come out. If there's a section that's not, we're still gonna want to take them to gravel and put in all gravel and new street surface, not just overlaying it. Take up what's there, throw it away because it's shot and gone, we'll put in all this street surface in down there. And that's, in a nutshell, that's, that's the Washington Street project. I don't have as much review onto that project as when they started this, I thought it'd be another year before we talk about it because if I was with USDA, we should do them both at the same time, at least get through that portion of it so that that's not holding us up as we move forward as, as time moves, moves on in our projects.
If I recall, we can apply for all the money from, and just take it as we need it?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Jessica talk about all of that.
Okay. The other thing that happened is I was working up to live on Jefferson when they, we did it a couple of years ago, but one of the things that they did a really poor job is the seeding to black earth after the fact. And the grass that they planted was nothing but crap. It was really crap. A lot of complaints in the neighborhood on that part of it. So if it's better grassy and it costs us a few hundred dollars more for some grassy, that's quality, let's do that part of it. So it looks as nice on top as it does in the zone.
That's always the biggest complaint on any project we get is that, I mean, gold lined shores and water, nobody cares because they don't see that. You see their yard and I told them to understand it. My network done heard, I hear it every time I go over there. I told them, I'm here, what you need to do is. But yeah, I understand, I totally agree with that.
And any other questions for Dan on Monroe or Washington?
So I have Jessica come up and explain to you the financing component, she's our bond counsel. Since none of you have gone through USDA financing or any type of bonds from a municipal standpoint, I really wanted to kind of educate you on that process so we have an understanding because we're gonna be having things start coming here pretty soon and I want you to understand what, what's being put in front of you.
Good evening. So what I just gave you is just an example of what the process would look like. This is not by any means the final schedule for any, any financing. It's just an example that would resemble closely a loan process if you went through it with rural development. And again, we don't know exactly how it would be structured because as Dan mentioned, you've got, you're looking at a couple of different projects, water, sewer and a couple of different streets to get it done in. So you might, after talking to your financial advisor, you might wanna package these so that you issue two bonds, which is just another word for loan, or you might actually end up having four. It just depends on how, again, what's in your best interest and the financial advisor can sort of structure it and package it for you. But, but this is essentially the procedure that you're gonna go through with each loan and it looks more complicated than it is. So this is an example of what the sanitary sewer system revenue bond would look like if you dealt with rural development. So your very first step would be to pass the resolution authorizing the publication of a notice of intent. So that's the very first step that you have to take. You need to publish a notice of intent to issue bonds and also to reimburse yourself for any improvement costs that you've spent in advance. And so you'd go ahead and you would publish that in probably the Lowell Ledger or some newspaper of general circulation and then it stays out there for forty-five days and that is actually a requirement that treasury mandates. It's gotta sit out there in order to give registered electors within the city the opportunity to sign a petition. If ten percent or fifteen thousand registered electors within the city sign a petition, then it has to go to a vote before you can issue the debt. That's pretty standard. Honestly, it rarely happens, but that's something that you have to go through, a step that you have to go through. So after you do that, then you would get a no rep random certificate from your city clerk. You would have to go ahead and file for qualified status from the Michigan Department of Treasury. I did check before I came tonight, you are qualified currently and through the end of the year, but that's something that you do on a regular basis and then it lasts, it lasts about a year that you can issue that without filing it again. So you'd be in good shape as far as that's concerned. Then you go ahead and issue the actual bond resolution and that is ordinance in this case, if you're doing sewer. And this is the big law ordinance that has to be published in its entirety and every time people say, well, can't you do a summary? But you can't, the law says you have to publish the whole darn thing. And, and it contains a lot of different elements required by the statute. So it explains what the project is, that it's public purpose, it actually shows the form of the bond that's gonna be issued and talks about all of the other details that are required at both the state level and the federal level for issuance of taxes on debt. So that goes out and gets published. And then there's also some loan resolutions that you have to fill out for rural development. These are very standard, they're, they're literally forms you just fill in the blank. So it is one more step in the process, but given the deal that you get, it's, it's worth every penny. You have to just make certain representations, for example, that you're not using the money for private use, those types of things, that you have the money to pay back the debt, et cetera. So those again are a standard form that you fill out very straightforward. You have to have a certified engineer file a certificate that the project is for a public purpose and again, that's very straightforward. Then of course, you would have the bonds drafted up, which is easy enough. You also have a general certificate of the city and we prepare all of these documents for you. And that certificate is essentially just says that you're authorized to issue these bonds, they're valid, again, you're not gonna use the proceeds for private uses and all sorts of other representations that are required to be in there by both the state statute and the federal government. You also file what's called a non-arbitrage and tax compliance certificate of the city. This is required by the IRS and again, it mostly goes to the issue of private use, that you're not going to get tax exempt bonds and then turn around and use it for, for private uses. So there are a bunch of representations in that document, which is filled with tax language and I won't go into too much detail, but again, we have that form and you need to, you need to fill that out as part of this process. And then, as somebody mentioned a moment ago, the nice thing about this is then you can borrow money from rural development as you need it. That's the nice thing about dealing with rural development and you only pay interest on the part that you draw. So, so that's really nice as well. The other thing is there is no prepayment penalty. So if you do wanna pay it off early, you can do that. If you don't want to, they go out as far as forty years to let you pay it back. There's really honestly no downside to, to doing this through rural development. So except for again, a few more documents you have to fill out, which are pretty standard. So again, then there's a few more things that you have to file, just the security report, which is just a standard form that you file with the local audit finance division in Michigan and then just a Form eighty thirty-eight G and some other things with the internal revenue service. And then we give you an opinion of bond counsel saying that these are, these have been issued properly and they're going to be used for a legitimate public purpose. So that's the process in a nutshell. Again, it sounds pretty boring, but it's, it's not that bad and it's really nice and easy to work with rural development. I'm not sure what interest rates they've been talking about.
So when we met on call a couple of weeks ago, interest rates right now are one and a half percent.
Yeah.
On the open market, which even on a revenue bond right now, they're about two. And one of the good nice things about this is the revenue, the debt coverage is a little bit different. The debt, so I think I talked to you about this in the past, like for a revenue bond, so like every dollar of debt you have, you have to have like a dollar forty in reserve and has to be, it has to be in your rates and you have to have that dollar amount every year. What rural development allows you to do is that, I believe you have ten years to even build up your reserve, but it's only the equivalent of one year's debt reserve. So it allows you in a sense, one, it allows you to prolong your, your debt and especially at low interest, that's really a good deal over forty years if you wanna prepay it, you can. But the other, but the other nice thing is, is that you only have to have that one year of debt coverage where every year you're putting a dollar, basically a dollar forty of that debt payment every year in reserve. So it, it's nice in that aspect as well.
Is there a limit to what you can borrow? My concern is that we're looking at one point five miles of road to repair when in fact we have well over ten miles of road and probably, probably be generous at ten miles. How do we then go ahead and finance the next eight and a half, eleven miles if we're debt on this? How do we go forward and move forward with most other streets that are needed? This is.
Yeah, I can, I can answer this. So fourteen percent of your whole network is where your water and sewer system is compromised. So this is a major component of that fourteen percent. So you can't use, you can't use water, this is gonna be paid for out of water and sewer funds. So you can't really use water and sewer debt almost anywhere in the city. You might be able in small little pockets here and there, but those for the most part, to my understanding, are probably cash and carry projects. So I mean, the road, I mean, the remainder of the roads, you're, you're right, it's, there's, there's still quite a bit of road and unfortunately, I mean, you know, we're gonna, you know, one of the nice things is we're trying to, we're trying to, you know, finalize the asset management plan. So that does, when you complete the street asset management plan, that does give you a lot more flexibility as to how you use your road dollars. So you could basically take your costs, your maintenance costs to, to cover the, the local major streets for the years and the remainder of it, you could just put on wherever you want the city with the money. Where right now, you, seventy-five percent of your funds go to major streets, twenty-five percent of your F-51s go to local where you, you now can maybe allow fifty percent to go to, of your funds to go to local. But when, when we get the completed asset management plan, we can take a hundred percent, you know, after our maintenance costs are put in place towards it. So are you gonna be sitting on a whole ton of money? No, but even the nice thing is, is, I mean, we're, we're, I mean, we've already knocked out four streets this year. We're gonna be knocking out two main, I mean, we're gonna be knocking out about a half-mile street next year with Amity, about a quarter, you know, and then about eight and a half miles with Foreman. We're gonna be looking at about another quarter mile of Jane Allen. And then if we, we're also including six hundred sixty, six hundred thousand dollars. And then if we, we're also including $600,000, $600,000 to this project. You're gonna be getting, I mean, we're not gonna be 100% paid, but we're starting to make chunks, you know, significant improvements. Now, we still got a long way to go, but this, I think, this is a major, this is a major project that has to be done regardless, these water and sewers. They're, they're, they need to be upgraded. So from where I, from where I sit managing this, I think this is, I mean, I think this is probably the best way to do it. I can't, I mean, without, without going back out for a miller during income tax.
Oh, all right, sorry. All right, any other questions for Jessica? Or Mike? Or Dan? All right, Dan, you're up again.
Well, in conjunction with what we just discussed. Yes, Monroe and Washington Street and Construction Improvement Project, we're considering the rural development loan from USDA. The loan has several components within its application process. One item includes providing engineering, preliminary engineering reports for each street. And the report needs to address the water component separate from the sewer component. Typically, these loans, you go in and you say, "Okay, we're gonna borrow money for water to fix our water in the street." You do this application and it goes in, or the sewer. Since we're doing both, we have to have a report for both of those. One of the nice things USDA said we could do is all the overlapping information can be put together in the one document. And then they just have to separate out just the water and sewer portion versus four different documents. And you're just gonna have to have two on each street. Again, the second item for the application is a map showing the city's water and sewer utilities within either street right of ways or on existing easements. As Mike mentioned, we met with Mr. Bristol from USDA. Williams Works representative, Dave Austin, Brandon Mears, who did as well. Plus, they've also talked in a sense to make sure we have the best understanding we can as far as the application process. Williams Works has provided us with the scope of services to perform the preliminary engineering reports and to provide utility right-of-way maps to meet the needs of the USDA application process. Again, the preliminary engineering report will better define the project and separate each utility construction needs. Cost estimates generated through this process will be used for applying for the funding for our projects. And as I said before, we have dollar amounts right now that are preliminary. This process will help define those dollar amounts even more closely to what they will be. Again, the right-of-way map will show our utilities within the city. And my concern on this part, the utilities that are in the street right-of-way, that'd be easy to show. The utilities that cross properties will have to be further looked into to make sure that there's an easement in the title searches for those properties. To make sure that that's there, that's all part of the process. Dave will provide the map and then somebody else will be making sure that the city attorney's office will be making sure that those utilities, easement utilities exist. Williams Works has indicated they can do the reports and the right-of-way map for a cost not to exceed $12,500. My recommendation that we move forward with that.
All right, any questions on that for Dan? Or Dave?
Dave, when do you think this, they would start and when would you have this completed by? What's your timeframe? Are you guessing?
We've estimated that if we started now, we could have these done or reviewed by the end of the year, probably. So this is the first step prior to the, before we're doing any application or are these required preliminary?
No more questions, though, for a motion to approve Williams and Williams preliminary engineering report amount to exceed $12,500.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Greg. All right, any other questions? Discussion, comment? Amy?
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Southwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Dan?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you for that. All right, ITC Fire Chief Contract, Fire Authority Board Matt last week. Motion and support and votes to start negotiating with Shannon Witherell on a contract to go from interim chief to full-time chief. Got the contract on Friday. Emailed it out on Saturday. Dick had the chance to take a look at it, so did Jessica. Mike did too. This is more of a, we're getting a deal with Shannon because he's dedicated to this community and he's, in my opinion, given us quite a bargain. And he has the respect of everybody underneath him and knowledge of the community. Sometimes you have an interim that just is a home run. We had it here with the police chief situation. Given internal candidate that's so good, you gotta move on, lock him up. So I, there's no questions on the contract. Everybody have a chance to look at it? All right, I will make a motion that we approve the employment contract for Shannon to be presented at the next fire authority meeting. Pending two-thirds or all three of the municipalities agreement. I think both township and Virginia Township are both bringing it to their boards tonight too.
Just to reiterate too, this would, this would increase our cost to the fire authority by about $10,000. So my, I've looked at how we would pay for this increase and it would be, we've had with not filling Luanne's position, with also, we have two, we have three positions that are in the DPW that currently we have not filled. And while they're spread over a number of different funds, there's enough saving, there's enough savings to this point that we'll be able to fund it for this year and then we'll just have to deal with it next year. But I think we can, I think we can incorporate it in going forward.
And it's a first step in addressing the need that we've talked about before too. You gotta have somebody there and you're not gonna find anybody better to be there than Shannon, in my opinion. Anyways, that's my motion. I'll support. Marty, any other discussion? Amy?
Councilmember Southwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeVore?
Easiest yes in four years. Yes. All right, board of commissioners, reports. Cliff?
None.
Jim?
I am done.
Marty?
Planning, we approved the building to be built behind the Speedway down there. Raised them right now to be a retail. Was zoned to be built there, it just couldn't be zoned with a warehouse. So they took that out and that passed. What's gonna be in the future, we don't know, but it's a taxable piece of property going up in the meantime. Light and power, I was not able to attend the meeting. Those girls night out and, well, 217 of us made up most of my time that night, so that's all I got.
Hey, Greg?
The Laurel Board not last Thursday, I had a family emergency. I wanted to make sure they had a form and then left them there, so I keep them where I am.
All right, that fire chief contract pretty much covers the fire authority. We also needed to move on that because we cannot start the process for the new county truck because the county will not engage in those discussions with any department without a chief or with an interim chief. So the full-time chief need is there to move forward to stay in the process for the new fire truck.
And Shannon, that won't be a?
No, nope. He was instrumental in the last one. We did the tender a couple of years ago, the new one. But we got lucky with Ron as far as base knowledge and that luck is continuing with Shannon. So I think it'll be a pretty, pretty involved process, pretty easy process. And the county has a whole process that they use too, where you can decide what to do with the old truck. They end up giving 207, I think, right, thousand, the county?
Yeah, about 200,000 for them and then about 450 from the other jurisdictions. That's, that's the worst-case scenario because like we said, there's still some money in the truck fund.
And there's options too for demo units and then you just outfit them yourself for used units too. It's all, all the county process, so. All right, that's it for mine. Any questions or discussion on the monthly reports? Mike, city manager's report.
Couple items. The local community fund met in September and I'm pleased to announce that the city did receive $150,000 for the show vote. So to date, we've received $350,000 in the last four months for the show vote from the community foundation, so I, from the community fund, so I'm real thankful for that. Obviously, the executive order stuff is still being played out. And obviously, it's not valid, but it's created a number of issues for us. Some of the issues have been finalized. For example, we are allowed to go back to Zoom if we need to, to have virtual meetings. And also, they also, through the recent law that was passed, the previous meetings that we had on Zoom are valid even without the, because technically they weren't valid with the executive orders being ruled unconstitutional. So that issue's been corrected out. We're now finding issues pertaining to Election Day. One of the issues they have is they did pass a, pass a law that allowed communities over $25,000 to have an extra day of absentee ballot counting for them. But they didn't allow it for smaller cities. I know from our end, we have significantly more absentee ballots this year than we have in years past. It may take more than a day to count those ballots. So it would've been nice to have been able to have the day earlier, but it is what it is. The other issue is there is a, if you saw, and on Friday, the Secretary of State announced that there is no open carry allowed at ballot sites. There is a significant legal question whether regarding the statutory authority of that being allowed. So I know Jessica's looking into that issue right now for a number, for not just us, but for municipalities across the state. This is really becoming an issue, especially with even the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police is weighing in heavily on this. I know MML is as well. So it's a, it's an issue that we're working on. And then also, last but not least, just wanna thank Luanne Wizniewski for her years of service to the city. She did retire on Friday. Friday was her last day. She does have some time left before her official date, but I wanna thank her for her service to the city. You know, as we discussed, we're not, we're not filling the position, but it is, you know, there might be some part-time needs that we need to address. But we're working on that.
Do I have to still pay my water bill and the land loan?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Nothing new in appointments. Council comments, Greg?
25 years ago, plus or minus, somehow being in the wrong place at the wrong time, I ended up on the planning commission. Had been on a few other community boards and commissions until I was kicked to the curb by those groups. There's three plates in my life. There's my personal plate, my business plate, and my community plate. They've always been pretty full, but I have some recent developments in my family plate that are causing me problems with my time commitment. So unfortunately, this will be my last city council meeting. I will be resigning and leaving you guys on. You're next, you're fresh blood that can pick up the torch and carry it. But the city has been in, you know, better times and worse times, but we're in a good place now, I think. And I feel confident you guys will continue on. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Shouldn't you go last?
That's not allowed in council committees.
Just gonna get the vote to approve that or something? You can't just leave.
I'm gonna say ghetto like Greg said.
I don't know if any of you know, but Greg and I've been, we've known each other for a long time. Both business owners here in this town. And I've always looked up to Greg for what he's done in our community and how he's helped. Family is always first. I'm gonna miss you. I'm sure you'll chew us out when we do do something right, but I expect that. But I'm gonna miss you.
I'll be around. I'm not going.
Cliff?
Wow, hey, thanks for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
Jim?
Well, I'm just glad we're down at Creekside Park tonight.
Freaking takeoff running.
But no, and what the guy said, Greg, it's been a pleasure serving with you and serving the community. You know, you're one of those citizens that stand out, helping everything, you know. There's things you don't do and there's probably more things you do do that we don't even recognize that you have done for the city, so thanks for serving.
Yeah, I didn't prepare anything because I didn't know, but I would, there's no doubt in my mind that I would not be on council still if it wasn't for you. The time that you came in and took over a seat, I appreciate you and... Yep, that's it.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Greg, we've, we've been together now for four years. We've probably, we've probably butt heads more than any other people in this room. But I've always respected you and I've always, I've always known your commitment to the community has been number one. And, you know, I will, I will miss working with you. I do listen to you. You may not think I do, but I do. And I appreciate your service to the city and what you do for this community stands for itself, regardless of being our president.
100%, 100%.
I make a motion that we allow Greg to take us all out to dinner to make up for the fact that he's leaving us.
No, he's not gonna get that huge council check that we get every... We should take him out to dinner.
Meeting's attended.
He still get it.
I can, it will never, ever, ever be the same up here without you. I'll say that. Or out there, or wherever it is that we're out doing stuff. I have such a respect for you that I couldn't ever quantify it if I had to. So I appreciate you and a lot, a lot more than I respect a lot of people, especially ones I don't always agree with. But everything you do comes from a place of love for the community and the rest of us. And you didn't have to step up here when you did. You didn't have to be on 95 other boards before that. But there's nobody anywhere that could ever question your dedication to anything you do, your family or your business or the city or the community, so. That's it. I will look then for a motion to go into closed session at the request of the city manager for performance reviews.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Greg and Jim?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
And Councilmember Southwell?
Yes.